Is there any questions?
Steve, this doesn't look like your normal forty-seven page contract. Okay.
I know how Steve works.
And this is the interchange that was discussed possibly having the trail connection on, correct? Which I think is-
Yes.
You are correct. It would have that trail access across roughly around 550 South. This would also be, and Indot is interested in this, we've had this discussion, connection right into the Ronald Reagan. So.
Great.
What's the turnaround time on the study?
Usually takes, this first stage is usually two or three months and get in front of federal highway.
So, not two or three months to complete the study, but two or three months to do the study and get in front of federal highway?
Two or three months for stage one.
Okay.
And then get in front of federal highway in that two and three, at the end of that two or three months.
Okay.
How often does federal highway approve these? How often do they get shipped out?
Well, like I said, they have not approved too many in Indiana. They've approved several in Ohio that we've done. The only two I know of Indiana is the one in Greenwood and the one in Fishers. They don't get approved very often, but there's not a lot of people asking for new interchanges either. So, as long as you follow their procedures and you do your traffic modeling, it's really up to them. But as long as we follow the procedure, we should get approval.
So, the funding would come, this is a discussion item, and this I have to, we still have discussions with them not to go through. But, we come out of MVH, so Motor Vehicle Highway.
I make a motion, we approve interchange justification preliminary study by MS consultants not to exceed forty thousand dollars.
I'll second.
In the absence of our president, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number T. Funding analysis for town and facilities. Chief? We're not going to skip a beat tonight.
Counsel, I'd like to take a quick second and recognize Councilman Jacobs. He and his family are going to be hosting a public safety event this weekend that unfortunately I'm not going to be able to attend, but I understand from past attendees that is quite the event that he and his family host for all the public safety responders throughout Boone County. And I'm sure a number of my staff, or I'm hoping a number of my staff will be in attendance along with many others. And Mr. Jacobs, I'd just like to publicly thank you and your family for doing such an outstanding thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
His head's going to be off in large tonight.
We'll help him out.
We'll help him get to the car. Counsel, just to give you a little background on how we got here tonight. Back in 2008, the Whitestown Police Department ran its operations out of a little bitty blue building in Legacy Core that is now a parking lot. That went from there to what Dax likes to refer to as the barn over on Cozy Lane, where we operated out of from 2009 until we moved into this facility. And we thought we had moved into the Taj Mahal, to be honest with you, when we came here. But just like everybody else in the community and all the other departments, we're growing and we're bursting at the seams. And the town is in a position where it could utilize the space that the police department currently sets in. And so, we approached the police commission with the idea of coming up with a building committee. They concurred. A number of our police commissioners, Commissioner Lawler, Commissioner Nixon, Commissioner Austin, sat on that board along with myself and Dax and my two admin staff members. And we had our first meeting on April the twenty-sixth. Some of the things that we went over was basically our office space wish list for the next twenty years. Recognizing that we're only going to really get one opportunity to do this and to try and do it right the first time. And so, utilizing a mathematical algorithm that Mr. Cutshaw provided us, we were able to make a determination based on the size of our want list to be around a thirteen thousand square foot building, coming in at a total cost of about three point five million, not counting land. We have seven acres of property up on Main Street. We're looking at a footprint roughly about one point one acre of that footprint. We looked at a design, potential design that could be placed even possibly here. But in order to do that, it literally wipes away a majority of the rear parking area of this facility. And with as much as what the municipal complex is utilized by our residents, I'm not sure that that's really what we want to do. So, that took us to the next phase where Dax took on the responsibility of doing a cost analysis. Reedy and he and I think completed that process back on the first of May. That was reviewed by the review committee on, at their meeting. And the recommendation was to send it forward to the full council to start the process of the design work. And with that, I'll let Dax explain the funding analysis because I'm not a numbers cruncher.
I think I attached this. Yes?
You did. I looked it over. I'm still looking at a spinning bar here, but I wish I'd brought my printouts.
Can't let those computers die, sir. So, here's what we have. We have a couple of different bonding mechanisms. One is a fifteen year bond, one's a twenty year bond. It would essentially net three million dollars to build the station. We've looked at different sites for the station. I haven't quite determined where that would be yet. And so, it would be a coit, coit doesn't exist. It'd be a lit bond. The county council hates this too, I can tell you that. It'd be a lit bond primarily focusing on increases out of the public safety lit first. And then, do we have enough in our other lit increases? And then, potentially, obviously it'd probably have to be a property tax backup for market in the bond market, but TIF could be included in there as well. So, if tax increment is coming in well, it could be included in helping to fund the structure as well. So, that's where we are now. Now, what we don't know is how much increase will we have in public safety lit and general shares lit from 2017 to 2018? How much are we going to have to increase to operate the public safety teams from 2017 to 2018? Can Chief Anderson find ways in his budget to reduce a couple of items to help fund debt service on a bond that we may take out to pay for the structure? Can Town General, if it does involve lit general shares, give up some items as well to help pay for the debt service? So, we financially can, the hundred thousand foot level is financially, we could do this. There's some items we need to work out prior to going full fledged in saying, you know, let's issue a bond, let's design the facility, let's move forward with construction. However, money's not getting any cheaper with rates continuing to rise and the feds continuing to threaten the rise in rates. And so, now, sooner than later would be a good time to move forward with doing a project like this. I'm going to have Reedy, you all probably haven't seen our financial report, I'll get that to you, but our AV growth in seventeen was twenty-two percent. It was a little bit crazy. It went from, I think, nine percent in sixteen to twenty-two percent from sixteen seventeen, unheard of. And so, if we continue to have at least moderate increases, debt service should be something that we could do, we could find to pay for this. So, there are items that we could, we're going into the budgeting season, right? So, here we are at June. We're all going to get together in June, July. We're going into it anyway. We're going to look at numbers, crunch them, look at our budget, see what we need to do, move forward. We know that we have continuing maintenance on this building. We continue to get, as we grow, we obviously have more expenses, so we've got to be careful about tying ourselves to debt that we, that causes us to be tight in providing service. But as Chief said earlier, this provides a service to the residents as well. Also, the building that you're sitting in, I just urge you to go back to the planning office before you leave. And you'll understand that when I say that we've outgrown this probably the day we moved in is not a joke. So, this would free up some room back in where the police are now to extend the planning office and maybe some other offices. And then, they would have their own standalone facility, and so would the fire department be building theirs as well. That's where we are.
Have you had any preliminary drawings of what it might look like yet?
No, we're not at that stage yet.
No, like I said, we want to, before we do things like that, we want to know what our finances are. We want to have our financing plan in place so that we don't have to come back to you and look like have egg on our face. So, to get, it looks like three million is going to be the number. We get a little, if we get over three million, the bond is too high, the debt service is too high. So, we'll have to cut, we'll have to cut back. But if we knew the number, and we don't want to, we don't want to engage an engineer and waste that money if we're not going to use the plan. So, cart, horse, chicken, egg stuff happening here, we have to know pretty much for sure we're moving forward before we engage an engineer to move forward with designing the-
So, what would be the next step? A design of the building would be the next step?
No, next step would be that we are certain about the financing of the project and we move forward with the issuance of bonds. That would be the next step. After we've moved forward with the issuance of bonds and we're comfortable with the fact that we're going to be able to make the debt service payments, then we engage, and what we've decided to do is a design, build, bid with a construction manager project. We believe that that's the best way to do this. Mind you, the town's never built a major structure. So, this would be, this one, except the utility has.
Utility?
The utility has, well, the fire, what's the fire built? The fires never build a major structure.
They're headquarters?
They're in the process, but they're starting yet.
But they're actually moving backwards as well because, you know, they have land issues. And we've been through many iterations of how to do it, bid, design. We determined recently that the best way to build both facilities is design, bid, build with the construction manager, hire is the most efficient way to do it. And so, you do your bond, and then, in this bond, engineering's not in this. We'd have to pay for engineering out of different source. So, we have to take that into account as well. It could be in this, but if the engineering's in this, you're going to reduce your, you're billed by three hundred thousand dollars and have two point seven instead of three to build a facility. So, the next step is for us to really make sure that we're comfortable with the debt service on any bonds that would be issued.
You mentioned there's a few pieces of land you're looking at, is that what you said?
Yes.
Is there one that you, there's probably some you want more than the others, or an ideal location?
Well, we do own seven acres on Main Street, but I think the neighbors would have to be, we'd have to certainly discuss it with the neighbors. You know, buffers and police station there and what do they think? We haven't had an opportunity to really meet with them, but that would be one potential site. We own the land, why would we, you know, go out and buy?
So, the other land you're thinking of is not town land. It's, there's just, there's land out there, but there's seven acres we own and then you're just looking around for other land too.
Right.
Okay.
So, that's where we are with this particular project. I don't know if we really wanted to have you all move forward. The building, the police commission building task force moved it forward to you as a favorable project to discuss, but we need to know for sure that the debt service isn't going to put us in a bind on our operations. I guess that's where I leave you. Priority, I would say. This is a priority.
Let's keep discussing.
Yeah, I think we keep discussing.
Keep discussing and-
I would suggest, Chief, if we get the building task force back together, we meet with Reedy again, we go over your budget thoroughly with a fine tooth comb. And we come back to this council with a surety that the debt service is not going to put us in any binds.
Right.
And the police commission is in favor of us moving forward when we know we have the numbers.
Right. We want to make sure that we have all the necessary funding in place before we ever start the design phase. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is letter U, the HWC proposal.
You have in front of you a proposal for HWC to provide planning services for the, what we call the TAMP, Transportation Asset Management Plan. It's a paysor essentially on steroids. It will look at trails, sidewalks, lighting. Remember, we've been talking about a lighting study. It's one of the goals on my board. Lighting, ADA ramps, streetlights. It'll be a real, very thorough assessment of where we are with our current infrastructure and where we need to go with new infrastructure. It will coincide with the update to the transportation plan, which is underway as well. And it will coincide with the creation of the new bicycle pedestrian master plan. And it'll coincide with the update to the Legacy Core master plan. That's what's in front of you tonight. You have already tonight in your additional appropriation approved money to be appropriated out of rainy day for the bicycle pedestrian master plan and the legacy, the update to the Legacy Core revitalization plan. We have already been approved to, for an expenditure for the update to the transportation plan out of MVH. And this would, the TAMP would be an additional expenditure out of MVH for the proposal that you see in front of you. For the purposes of the public, I don't, I can't remember the number, hundred and-
Hundred ninety-two thousand one hundred.
For all, all that.
Is it Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan, additional public participation services? Is that something that might be over and above that?
Yeah, do you want the eighty-five hundred for additional public participation?
No, I do remember that. We talked about that today. I think we want to take that out.
So, you'll come back to us if you need that?
Correct.
I would entertain a motion, as these are all important projects that were, you know, we discussed in our strategic planning meeting at the beginning of the year.
And have, the AA tonight pretty much takes care of all the funding.
I would make a motion that we approve the execution of the Uniform Contracted Services, provided legal has approved it, and it has all of our language, not to exceed to HWC engineering for Legacy Core District Plan, Bicycle and Pede Master Plan, Transportation Asset Management Plan, which includes Sidewalk Asset Management Plan, Pavement Asset Management Plan, Sign Asset Management Plan, for a scope of services total not to exceed a hundred ninety-two thousand one hundred dollars.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. Motion is adopted five to zero.
Dax, if I understand this correctly, from today, it's about seven months before we finalize? Looking at the, the activity schedule?
Correct.
Stage four or four, attachment aid?
Correct. You can't accuse us of not strategically planning. Nobody can. Being ready for growth.
All right, up next we have letter V, vehicle purchase for town staff.
So, Chuck's vehicle is getting old and was, we like to put it into a pool. It's the oldest vehicle I think we have in operation at this point. And Nathan, what we like to do is purchase a vehicle out of Town Capital Outlay. You have in front of you a bit of proposal. This is the same vehicle essentially that Jason just bought for utilities that you all approved. We don't ask for vehicles often on the town side. Matter of fact, I'm not sure we've come to you in quite some time and asked for a vehicle on the town side. My vehicle's old, but works. I'm not going to ask you for one. So, this is, this was also in our, this is one vehicle that was in our strategic planning session on February first. It's a very good price. What Nathan has suggested is that we buy this vehicle and then he trades the Parks truck, which I think was a very good offer on his part, to Chuck for facility maintenance. It has a plow, so Chuck can also use it to plow the facilities. And then Nathan takes the, this vehicle to use as a Parks vehicle. So, it'd just be a swap.
Would it make sense to just buy a second pickup truck?
We don't need a pickup truck. So, the pickup truck was going to be around thirty-seven or thirty-eight. And Nathan said, you know what, I don't, I don't need a pickup. Let's just not spend money we don't need to spend. And I think that's good on his part.
Thank you, Nathan.
And so, we, you have them in front of you.
Thank you. And this is a good price. This is the same price as the utility had because of the fleet agreement that we have.
Correct. And it helps spin down Councilman Baum's slush fund.
It's your slush fund.
No, it's the slush fund. I'd make a motion that we approve the purchase of the Explorer not to exceed twenty-nine thousand dollars.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. Motion is adopted five to zero. And next we have letter W, computers. You don't get to sit down.
So, in the additional preparation discussion, I did talk about the computers. Computers are thirty-six hundred dollars per unit. They are twenty-three inch, are they twenty-three inch screens? It's the Microsoft Surface Studio. It's the top of the line Microsoft computer. It will do everything that needs to be done. So, what's, that's twelve, we need twelve times thirty-six hundred dollars. And my brain has turned off. I think it's around forty thousand, if I'm remembering correctly, for all of them. That includes the accessories needed, which would be the keyboard, mouse, and then some other device that they have that, that would, that would be all the, the accessories that would be needed to purchase the units. They would then get synced with all the tablets that we have. And most of us now are getting the Surface Pros, especially those that are out in the field. The computers that we have, mine is a very good computer, can go, can move on to another staff member. Jason's is a good computer that can move on to another staff member. Jason will pay for his and for his staff out of utility because they'll primary, primarily be used for utility work. The other computers can be used by additional staff members. And Nathan brought up a great idea of, and we had this idea when we first moved into this building, two or three for a computer lab, for a public computer use. Since the public doesn't have necessarily a library here, we could do three or four nice computers for computer lab type work.
Forty-three two hundred for twelve at thirty-six hundred dollars of these.
Forty-three two hundred.
It's expensive, computers.
They are. They're very nice computers.
How long are they going to be used for?
What's that?
What's our projected lifetime for them? Are we talking five years, seven years, three years?
We, we talked five to seven years.
Okay. And then do these-
Computers really last that long?
Well, they're, it's getting to the point where they're not necessarily getting, you know, technology is slowing a bit. I've got a laptop that we still use in this building that was bought in 2008. It's used sometimes in this room. It's used elsewhere.
These are all in one. So, you say twenty-three inch. That's the all in one computer. Is that what's going on?
Yep.
And so, second monitors or third monitors are going to be, you already have plenty of monitors.
We have a ton of them in the building. A ton of them.
Is there any type of refresh program that comes along with this? Or at the end of that five years, we're going to have a possibility for changing different brands or things like that?
No, I don't believe so. It's very rare now in the computer world.
And then will there be any other units that need to be replaced after these twelve have been replaced? Are we going to be pretty good to go for the next couple of years?
We don't believe so. I believe that some of the Lenovo's that we have are in good shape. Others are not. They're crashing. They're, they're not working. Tanya has a laptop. She's, she's doing her work on a laptop and it doesn't work. It's, it's not feasible for her. She's just hired somebody who we brought on to do video, live streaming. That person should have the top of the line best of the best so that the public can get the best of the best. And so, we vetted this process. We could go to Best Buy and buy units for twenty-two hundred dollars apiece that are these specs. I think these are eight gigs. If I remember correctly, it's eight gigs. I can't remember the speed. And I can't remember the terabytes, but I thought it was a four, two or four terabyte drive. Obviously, with Microsoft Windows ten and, you know, all the software that, we're in the cloud anyway, so the Windows software is already paid for with our cloud licensing of Office 365.
I understand doing graphics or making videos, some computing, the specs needed for those, you need a powerful processor and all that. I'm just personally having a hard time with thirty-six hundred dollars for each computer. I know you're saying they're great. I just, that's a lot of money.
Jeanette has gone through three new computers, three Lenovo's in the last, no, yeah, three, in the last three and a half years. So, we can get what we pay for if we'd like and end up buying new ones every-
But it's going to be better than this.
Well, when you, when you let it die, it goes, it definitely does its updates, so.
Yeah, you can't let it die.
Yeah, Nathan's on his third lap, third computer in two and a half years. Because we've been going and, there hasn't been a program. We've been going and buying one at Best Buy or buying one on Amazon, you know, the, the commercial, cheap, the cheaper computer, computer, it just, it's not working.
Wouldn't it be better to ease ourselves into this, you know, and maybe do five this year and see how they work?
Sure. We could, we could do that.
Instead of just doing-
I was, I was first thinking of all the department leaders. So, Nathan, Jason, now Jason's on the utility side. So, Lauren, now Robert needs one because Robert is going to look at the, Dave and Robert are both going to look at plans with this. And they've already gone through that process and it's excellent. So, Lauren, Dave, Robert, Jeanetta, who is, now she, she could probably get away with having mine. So, take, take her out of that mix. My computer that I have now, because it's working decently well. Myself, Tanya, her, her, her staff, I think that's six right there. So, six we could probably do and make sure that it works well. And then see if we have additional funding to move forward from there.
And I understand paying for quality. And especially if they turn out to be quality, then that's better than replacing it three times a year or three times in three years.
So, six would, I mean, six would work as well. We could, that gets us started. The two, probably the most essential four of those are Tanya, Glenn, who we haven't made that announcement yet, but she did make a hire. I was going to do that in my report. Tanya, Glenn, Dave and Robert. Those are the essential folks that need them. My computer is okay, and if I didn't get one, I probably wouldn't cry. But it'd be nice to have uniform systems across the board. nice to have uniform systems across the board. I think Lauren needs one as well, sensible for her to have those, look at her planning activities. So if we're going to do five, mine's, mine's the sixth one.
Do six.
Six is fine with me. Six would be okay, plus it would give us the opportunity to then look at our budget coming up for next year, see if we still want to do it.
My parents are going to be needing a very specific editing computer, so I don't know what they're going to want. And it might be this, but it might not, I don't know, I think that's a, it's a, it's a very specific person for us.
They're going to need graphics cards if they're doing videos and things like that.
That's what this computer has, this computer is designed for that.
So everybody you mentioned really needs a heavy-duty graphics card?
No, that's not what I said. But this is an all-in-one unit from Microsoft, which is the same unit across the board. Now, we could get a cheaper studio for, actually, I think this is the cheapest Surface Studio. If you want us to get, you know, cheap HPs...
No, we're, we're, we already said we're going to do some of these, so...
We could do five.
It's the sixth, it's the sixth one that we don't know, I mean, come back next month.
We can make, work what we have now. We don't, you have to make this expenditure, I was just, this is really a business plan. This is more the, this is more the business planning than anything else.
Mr. President, I move that we...
Oh, I've left one out. I left a person out.
Or not.
I'm sorry. I think the six should be, I'm sorry, I left Matt out. I think the six should be Matt. Because he does, he, his life is on the computer and he's...
Didn't he just have an issue with his laptop?
He did just have an issue with his computer, so I apologize. I think the six should be Matt's computer. I'm done.
Okay. Mr. President, I move that we approve the purchase, six units of the computers as presented for their per-unit price of $3,600.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion is adopted. There you go.
Thank you.
Get some computers.
I will.
Dax, I think we forgot this. They're going to be gold-plated.
No, they're not gold-plated.
Dax.
Yes?
I think Jason's going to be very upset. Whitestown Parkway resurfacing.
Parkway improvement.
Okay.
All right, Town Administration Report.
All is well. We, what we are about to start the summer road program, one thing you are seeing right now is striping. So you approved that at your last meeting, the striping program has begun when it's not raining, which is never. We continue to mark things off the board in there of what the goals were, a lot of that happened tonight. The public heard a lot of spending, but I think these are one-time spends for five-year plans and important pieces of infrastructure. The engineering for the beautification project is well underway. Lori's probably gone by now, yes. The Stormwater Project will begin two weeks after tonight, I believe. We'll have a pre-con meeting next week. Shortly after the pre-con meeting, they're ready to move forward. We anticipate a five-month project. At the end of the project, the roads will be resurfaced, but in the meantime, it'll be a, it'll be a tough road to hoe. And we've already talked to some of the business owners and said that we'll work with them as best we can to, to move forward. I do want to update you on an item. It's the Connector, Ronald Reagan discussions that have been going on in the newspaper. Had a good conversation, I believe, with the county council on Tuesday to kind of explain our position. I want to explain it with you. County Commissioners passed a resolution to terminate the interlocal with the Connector. I still don't have an explanation for you as to why. And we did write a check, if you remember, you approved, you approved money to pay for the right-of-way acquisition.
We approved 210,000?
215,000, some odd dollars. I know Matt, I think Matt has had that prepared or was going to have it prepared after tonight's claim. That did not get sent, and we are unsure as to whether we should send it or not. I still don't have any clarity from the Commissioners, and so I still await that. I know that we are going to send, I think with your approval, we'd like to send a letter to the county Commissioners, giving some, them some clarity on what the interlocal means and what the law states as far as if they don't do the project and if they do do the project, that even if they do do the project, that the road is, or they may have to dedicate the road to us, am I correct, to summarize the letter?
Can you briefly elaborate on that, Steve?
I think your mic is dead, I apologize, sir.
I mean, I think there's, there's two things. One is the statute. Under, under Indiana law, the municipality has exclusive jurisdiction over the streets and roads within its boundaries. So Whitestown has exclusive jurisdiction over all of its roads, just like when Whitestown annexes a road, or Zionsville annexes a road, or Lebanon annexes a road, they take jurisdiction over the road. It's not, it's not a taking. You just have jurisdiction over it. So that's what the law is. In fact, they can't, the county can't, can't even construct a road in our boundaries without our permission. That's what the interlocal agreement was. The interlocal agreement authorized the county to do that with some of the assistance from us on the reimbursement on some of the right-of-way acquisition. And the agreement as well contemplates that the county can terminate it, or Whitestown can terminate it. But if either party terminated it, the county would have the option to either complete construction of the Connector, which I think is what they've indicated their intention is, or not complete construction and return their funding to the federal government or end it. But the agreement also contemplates or states that upon termination or expiration that, or upon completion of the Connector, that the county has to transfer all of the right-of-way over to Whitestown, free and clear of any encumbrances, which is, you know, is consistent with what the statute says essentially. So it's, it's, and we've talked about it, and I'm, I'm not sure what the county's intent is, but it's my opinion that it's our...